Good evening, everyone. This is Greg Foxman, Chair of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission, calling the September 16th meeting to order. It is now 6:00 PM. First, we'll start with the roll call. Commissioner Krasik.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Greina.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
And from the city staff, we have Michelle Thomas, Kim Van Zwollenberg, Kim Mahoney, and Carl DeCemus.
And for the record, Chair, if I could, Kim Van Zwollenberg is from the State Department of Ecology.
Oh, right. Thank you. And also, just for the record, I think we are aware that Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Soltes won't be in attendance tonight. Okay. So let us hop into the agenda. But first, I guess I need to say that tonight's meeting is an open public hearing. And I don't know if we have anyone from the public that is attending, but in the event that they do, to speak during the meeting, the public can raise their hand button near the bottom of their Zoom window or press star nine on the phone. Comments will only be allowed during the designated portions of the meeting. Please refrain from raising your hand until I have announced that the open public comment portion of the meeting has begun. Your name or the last four digits of your phone number will be called out when it is your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may want to need to press star six to unmute yourself. All speakers will have up to three minutes and only three minutes to speak, at which point I will ask Michelle Thomas to turn off their microphone. Okay. So first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting of August 19, 2021.
We approve the minutes.
So moved or approved by Commissioner Bradbury. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Greina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Our big item for this evening is the Shoreline Management Program Periodic Review Public Hearing. So I will flip over to a different page here. And we're, this is going to be a little bit of some new procedure for the commissioners, so just bear with me here. This is an open public meeting. The public is allowed to attend and can comment on the items being reviewed during the comment period a little bit later in the meeting. Have any of the planning commissioners had any oral or written ex parte communications with the applicant for this meeting? If so, please indicate. Okay, and taking into consideration the appearance of fairness doctrine, do any members of the commission have reason to recuse themselves from discussion and voting on this application? If so, please speak up now. All right, there are no positive responses there. Do any members of the audience have any appearance of fairness concerns regarding any commission member? Any member of the city staff or with any portion of this proceeding? And I see none. There be no outstanding appearance of fairness issues. We will begin the review with the staff report. So I will return, I will turn the meeting over to the city staff to provide that report.
Thank you very much, Chair. Appreciate that. And thank you, commissioners, members of the public. My name is Carl DeCemus, principal planner with the city of Gig Harbor. And myself and other staff members have prepared this staff report for the hearing this evening. And also, I'd like to welcome Kim Van Zwollenberg from the Department of Ecology. This is a joint public hearing with the Department of Ecology per the per the rules and regulations that allow us to conduct a joint, optional joint public hearing for Shoreline Master Program update. So as you've already stated, Chair, we are here this evening to conduct a public hearing on application number PL COMP-21-0002, which is the Shoreline Master Program Periodic Review and Update. The City of Gig Harbor Community Development Department Planning Division is the applicant for this update. As the commission knows, the proposal is a non-project action to update the Gig Harbor Shoreline Master Program per state law requiring that the city conduct a periodic review at least once every eight years. The minimum scope of this review is to assure that the master program complies with the applicable law and guidelines in effect at the time of the review, and also to assure consistency of the master program with the government's comprehensive plan and development regulations adopted under Chapter 36.70A of the Revised Code of Washington, if applicable, and other requirements. The State Department of Ecology provides the guidance for the periodic review update through a guidance document and a checklist, both provided as exhibits to this staff report before you this evening. The checklist includes several required updates necessary due to changes in state law and policy, as well as those updates and amendments proposed by the city found necessary through the administration of the program since its last update and adoption in 2013. As part of those city-proposed updates and amendments, the city has sought to provide further consistency between Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 1810, the city's flood hazard construction standards, and the program, Shoreline Master Program, that is. This has been accomplished by working with both Ecology and FEMA, who administers the National Flood Insurance Program, to find improvements that will further align the Shoreline Master Program with the so-called door-to approach to compliance with the Endangered Species Act. The door-to approach, as we have discussed in the past, is a programmatic approach to compliance rather than a more piecemeal case-by-case approach. In your packets this evening, you will have found the checklist I mentioned earlier and the associated proposed updates and amendments provided in the Shoreline Master Program chapters. Six of the eight chapters in the Shoreline Master Program include updates and amendments and have been exhibited as Exhibits A1 through A8 to this staff report. Note that Chapters 2 and 3 were not updated or amended, and as such, they have not been included here. So the exhibits are A1 through A8, but I numbered those so that they would correspond with the corresponding chapters. I thought that might be easier for the public and for the commission. Please tell me if I'm wrong. So the staff report for tonight's hearing provides all of the required and applicable codes and policies necessary to be met in order for the Shoreline Master Program periodic review to be approved at both the local and state levels. It also provides background for the program and the process, including 10 study sessions held at the Planning Commission beginning back in 2018. And here we finally are. Staff has provided an analysis of the updates and amendments relative to the approval criteria located in Gig Harbor Municipal Code 1909.170 for amending the city's comprehensive plan, of which the Shoreline Master Program is incorporated into by reference. In our staff report, staff concludes that the Shoreline Master Program updates and amendments as presented here tonight do meet those criteria, as well as that of the relative state regulations. And Chair, if I could, that really concludes my staff report. However, there were a few amendments since we last met. We had to make a couple of last-minute changes to a couple of the chapters, and I'm sure you all noticed that, you know, when these were put out to the public and to the Planning Commission. But I, just for sake of consistency, I just wanted to go over those just briefly. I have about three or four slides here that I'd just like to present to you all, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think we'd all appreciate that. Thank you.
Bear with me one moment here while I get that set up. Okay. Is everybody seeing that title slide?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let me see here, okay. So you'll notice in the checklist that was provided for the hearing, we cleaned it up quite a bit since the study sessions and added in sort of a really, you know, completely complete and comprehensive look at all of the amendments and updates that were made to the chapters in the Shoreline Master Program. And there were just a couple of items that we noted were not presented to to Planning Commission at the study sessions. And that was just oversight on staff's part in a couple cases. But relative to this first slide, actually, this was a question that came up at one of our study sessions about the definition for substantial development. And so, and I'd also like to mention that, just to clarify, these changes were included in the chapters and in the materials that went out for the for public review 30 days ago in compliance with and inconsistent with the state requirements for this public hearing this evening. But at one of our recent study sessions, we discussed the substantial development definition, and there were some concerns about how that was being defined. There was a concern about, you know, whether or not it would be clear to a user of the Shoreline Master Program. And this is relative, of course, to the to the threshold cost for whether or not a project rises to the level of substantial development. What staff heard from the Planning Commission that evening was that we needed some way to provide clarity to the users of the program relative to that actual number. The state law states that it is set at $5,000, and then every few years is amended. And so the way we previously had this written is that we had the actual amended amount within the definition. What staff decided to do was to actually include a footnote. So we took the definition verbatim from the RCW, leaving the $5,000 figure in, but including a footnote that directs users to the city's website, where we'll host the current threshold amount sort of in perpetuity. So I have a link here that I'm going to move over to. Are you all seeing the website, the webpage now? Or are you still seeing the slideshow?
The slideshow.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so this would be the landing page or the Shoreline Planning page. So when someone has a, would have a question about that threshold amount, the footnote would direct them to go to the city's website. They would go to our planning page and then find Shoreline Planning in the sidebar. And on the Shoreline Planning page, we've included an FAQ that talks about, it asks the question, what is the dollar threshold that may exempt my shoreline development? If you click on that, then it will take the user to a statement here that says, effective as of September 2, 2017, the substantial development dollar threshold is $7,047. Please refer to Section 8.2.2 of the Gig Harbor Shoreline Master Program for information related to exemptions from substantial development permits. And then we'll actually host the Office of Financial Management, who actually provides that adjustment to the threshold amount through a notice. We will actually host that notice on our website. And so when a new notice comes out from OFM, we'll just replace it here, replace the amount, and that should be pretty clear then to the user. We felt like that was a pretty good felt like that was a pretty good result. And I think it meets the intent of what the commission was after when we were talking about this previously. All right, let me go back to my slideshow here. Sorry for the wonkiness here, but I don't know how else to do it. Okay, so the second change that we made second change that we made was another another change to Chapter 2, which is the definitions chapter. And so we revised a couple. We revised one definition for flood hazard, the floodplain hazard permit. And then we added in these other six definitions for riparian buffer zone, special flood hazard zone, biological opinion, no effect, not likely to adversely affect, and adversely affect. These are all definitions that are brought directly from Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 1810. And this is to further support the consistency between the program and Chapter 1810 to further solidify that door-to approach that we're after. So nothing, really nothing out of the ordinary with these definitions. They're very, they really are just cut and paste from Chapter 1810 directly into the program. This change, the next two changes are relative to the reduction in the urban growth area that took place in East Bay, on the other side of the bay. If you'll recall, the city passed a resolution and the county an ordinance to reduce our urban growth area on the other side of the bay from Gig Harbor. And we realized that we have all of these figures in Chapter 5 in the Shoreline Master Program, then that we're reflecting we're reflecting the wrong urban growth area. And through that, also reflecting shoreline environmental jurisdiction or designations and shoreline jurisdiction that now will not exist within the program. So we had to go through and amend all of the figures in Chapter 5 to reflect those changes. And so that is, that has been done. And Chapter 5 is included in the packet, so all those figures have been made available to the public for review. We worked with our GIS department and also with Pierce County to ensure that we, that we had it correct. One note I need to make on that, however, is that Figure 2-A, which is found on Page 5.7 of Chapter 5, will be subject to change. And I'm going to flip over and show you that really quick. So this is Page 5.7 of Chapter 5. These are amended maps and figures. The issue we came across is that when we did the UGA reduction for East Bay, so this used to all be in the UGA over here in the urban growth area. It was taken out of our urban growth area. When the, when the city, when the county council approved the ordinance, then the ordinance and the map was transmitted to their GIS department. When their GIS department got it, they also took out the spit property where the lighthouse is from our urban growth area. And that was not how the ordinance was actually written. So it's a bit of a Scrivener's error, really. But it's something that needs to be corrected. And so the only effect that might, that would have on this Shoreline Master Program is that this parcel here would be, would be shown in, as part of our urban growth boundary. So it would get that pink shading in this figure. And so what I would, what I would ask the Planning Commission this evening is if we, if we do get, if there is a favorable recommendation to move this from the Planning Commission to the city council, that the Planning Commission consider adding a proviso within that recommendation that this Scrivener's error, if corrected, that this Figure 2.52A would include, would reflect that correction of the Scrivener's error. Okay, so let me stop that share. Go back. Okay, and finally, also as a result of the East Bay UGA reduction, Chapter 1 included, includes some figures relative to the total mileage of shoreline jurisdiction that we have both within the city limits as well as within our urban growth area. And so we needed to amend that as well, because that's changed slightly. And so we made those changes in Chapter 1, Section 1.7. And I can show you in Figure 5.1, why we had to make that change. Bear with me. One more last change here, sorry. So this is Figure 5.1. This is our actual, our official shoreline map. And so we had to reduce all of this area actually wrapped around over here that was formerly in the shoreline jurisdiction and captured as mileage within our UGA. And so that was removed. So our mileage is significantly changed within the urban growth area. And so we reflected that change as well in Chapter 1.
Carl, you may have covered this, but just out of curiosity, what is the mileage of shoreline for Gig Harbor?
Very good question. I did not cover that, but I should be able to show you the actual change here. Right here is the change. So approximately shoreline jurisdiction within city limits of Gig Harbor and its urban growth area encompasses now approximately 5.12 miles of Puget Sound shoreline with approximately 3.32 miles of shoreline within the city limits.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
You're very welcome, Commissioner. And with that, Chair, I have concluded my staff report.
Okay, thanks, Carl. So at this point, do any commissioners have any question for Carl or other staff members regarding his report? Particularly, I would say in regards to the three slides that he showed us with the amendments we had, that we had discussed but not seen, and perhaps not seen or discussed. So is everyone comfortable then with the staff's recommendations with regards to the changes?
Yes.
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 Okay, I think that, you know, given that those are at least one of them, I would consider probably a substantive change. Why don't we make a motion, a formal motion, to adopt all of those changes as recommended by the staff?
So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the amendments as presented by staff.
Okay, thank you.
I second.
So seconded by Commissioner Bradbury. Is there any discussion on any of that? Or questions?
Do we have any public comment?
Well, yeah, thanks for thanks for pointing that out. I guess procedurally, I would need some clarification. We need to have the public comment period, but my thought was that we need to formally, as the commission, adopt these changes. And that would be before the public comment and then our subsequent adoption of the entire changes.
Chair, if I could, I would, I would recommend to the commission, I think that a vote of acceptance of those changes is is probably relevant at this point, but I don't know that I would vote necessarily to adopt the amendments as part, I would, I think I would wait and incorporate all of them into one formal recommendation or one formal adoption for recommendation to the city council. Does that make sense?
So you, so that is, we don't need to have a formal motion right now to accept those changes, just a voice vote?
I think, I think that a vote for now is probably just fine, because you're going to take, you're going to vote later on the recommendation to move all of the, all of the updates and amendments as one whole package up to the council.
Okay, so then I would also agree, which would make our voice vote five in favor, none against, in accepting your recommended changes. And then at this point, as soon as my computer begins to respond, there we go. I will open the floor or will open the public comment portion of this meeting. So I will just read again to speak during this meeting. Just please, any member of the public race, press the raise hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine on your phone. Your comments are allowed to be up to three minutes. At three minutes, your microphone will be turned off. Your name or the last four digits of your phone number will be called out when it is your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. So I am opening the floor for public comment. And I would also ask of the staff, have you received any written statements or that need to be read into the record at this point?
Thank you very much, Chair. We have not received any public comment on this application to date. Just a couple of inquiries from Puget Sound Energy and from the tribal Indians, but no formal comment. I would also like to state at this time that due to the timing of when we noticed the 30-day public comment period for this public hearing, the public comment period would technically, technically will not end until tomorrow, which is a little bit of an oddity, but it does happen from time to time that we actually close the public hearing after the, or public comment period after the hearing. So at the conclusion, I think it's worth restating that we will be accepting public, any written public comment until close of business tomorrow. That would be Friday, September 17. And and I think it would also be worth noting that if any substantive comments are received from, that would, that would that would present any need for further study by Planning Commission or further consideration by Planning Commission, then we may, we may need to well, we will have to cross that. Well, we will have to cross that, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it, because I've never, I've actually never experienced that before. But if it does happen, then I will confer with you, Chair, on, on next steps in the process at that point. And, and with the Department of Ecology, of course, to determine how well, how we would handle those changes.
Okay. And speaking of which, I guess I would, well. I've gotten a little bit out of order, I suppose, but while we're waiting for any public comment. I guess I would invite Kim Van Zwollenberg and ask her if she has anything that she would like to add to the presentation or. Perhaps even questions from you.
Got nothing.
Okay.
But thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, well, Michelle, I don't see any other participants on my screen.
We just had a hand raised.
Okay. So I would recognize. Elaine B, I don't see her phone number showing up there, so I don't know what the last digits, can you see, Michelle?
There is no phone number, I believe she's on, online.
Okay.
Yes, I'm online, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we sure can.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Elaine, you have up to three minutes to speak.
Oh, yeah, I don't think I'll need a full three minutes, but this is Elaine Babbie, I'm with Puget Sound Energy. And I'm one of the individuals, I think that Carl referred to, that's been informally corresponding and, and kind of tracking your SMP update. And I just want to thank everyone for all the efforts so far. I know this is a, a lot of work to do and we try to stay dialed in. To jurisdictions that are doing their SMPs and provide comments where needed, so I probably will be submitting formal written comments tomorrow. I did lose track of your aggressive schedule, so I'm a little behind, but. We'll be focusing on that 7.21, the utility section and probably a few definitions, mostly. Just to get a little more clarity around utility categories. We sometimes find that. The definitions of, of utility facilities really matter. And I think the ecology template for a lot of those definitions is, is a little confusing, so. Carl, you can expect a letter from me tomorrow and I apologize for coming in late. But yeah, we'd like to get a few things, few recommendations out there for your consideration. And that's, that's all I have. It looks pretty good. I, I will admit to being a little confused about the integration. Between both the flood hazard regulations and critical areas, but we'll, we'll try to catch up on what's. What's being attempted there. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input, we appreciate that. Okay. So I guess I would say once again, Michelle, I don't see anyone else on my screen or that appears to be. In the meeting.
Nope.
Okay, so I am formally closing the public comment portion of this meeting. And so. Once again, I would invite any questions or discussion from the commission. Commissioners or the staff. Based on what you've heard and based on the public input.
So Carl, if we do, when we do get those comments from Puget Sound Energy. It sounds like there might be some things in there that maybe we need to discuss, what would be the best way to handle that?
Thank you, the question, Commissioner. Well, we will, we'll have to wait and see the content of the, of the comment. Themselves and determine whether or not. Determine whether or not it. Will require. Any substantive changes to, to what has been amended and updated so far. In the program and, and or whether, you know, and whether or not. We feel comfortable moving the planning commission's recommendation up to city council. With that comment or comments. Provided as sort of an addendum and then, you know, staff would, would, there would have to be another. Hearing if any of those changes were. If there were any changes made to the chapters as a result of the comment, so. I think it kind of remains to be seen a little bit as part of the process with the Department of Ecology. We are required to respond to any comments that have been provided by the public. And we are required to. We are also required to provide to the Department of Ecology. Be any actions taken by the local jurisdiction as a result of those comments, so. I'm looking, I'm kind of looking at Kim Van Zwollenberg, although she can't see me looking at her. But I'm wondering if in your experience. Kim, you, you've ever had to deal with, with, with a situation like this?
I'm trying to recall if, if I have and most. Nothing is coming to mind.
Yeah, that's, that's been my experience as well, so we're, we're in a little bit, we're kind of in uncharted waters, just a little bit. And so I think we have to wait and see what the, you know, and answer the question, we have to wait and see what the comment is. The comments are and determine. Determine if they, if they will require any changes to the program. If they require changes to the program, I think my recommendation would be. That we. My recommendation would be that we, we move forward with the planning commission's recommendation to, to council. Based on what you have already seen and reviewed and based on what the public has reviewed. And with a, with an, with an addendum, including those comments and proposed changes as a result of those comments. Up to city council, for the city council to make a final decision on. I think that makes the most sense based on, you know, just in order to keep the process as linear as possible. And I'm open to more discussion or suggestions about that, of course.
Carl, would it be appropriate if we held off approval till our next meeting? And then at that point in time, we've had an opportunity to see the comments and decide where to go from there.
Well, I think the only, I think the only, I, I'd like the idea commissioned, the only problem, I think, is that we end up in a situation. Where we would have to have, if we, if we make changes to the master program. At this point. We would have to have, the, the, the public would need an opportunity to weigh in on those changes, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but I believe that to be true. And so I don't know if we would have to have, hold another public hearing at the planning commission level, or if we could simply make those changes. Have the planning commission provide a recommendation. Incorporating those changes and then we would be required then to hold another public hearing at the city council level.
Okay, so in that case, then the city council would receive the comments and then if they wanted to make any changes in the master plan, based on those comments, they could do it at that time.
Well, I think that's one option, the option I was just describing was, was bringing, as you suggested, bringing it back to planning commission. For you to review what those changes would look like and make your recommendation based on those, but we would still hold another public hearing at the, at the city council level. For the public to weigh in on. Past changes again, as well as these new, these new amendments and updates.
So it wouldn't be necessary for us to hold another public hearing, which obviously would be substantially time consuming.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe so, the, the, the cleaner way to do this would be, would, would be to get a, a recommendation from planning commission tonight based on. Based on what has been presented to the public. For this hearing. And then taking whatever. Whatever amendments or whatever amendments resulted from the public comments provided. Up to council for them to then make an, their ultimate decision based on your recommendation. As well as those, those public comments and the resulting changes. I don't know, we can, that's, it's almost like bringing two versions up to the city council and I think, Kim Van Zwollenberg, I believe. You've told me in the past, though, that that's not. Something that the Department of Ecology. Likes to see so much in these, in these processes.
No, I don't know if I've said, I don't know if I've said that, I, what I. There are times when ecology requires changes, so you do end up with a planning commission recommended draft that goes up to an elected body. City council in this case, and then changes that ecology is requiring and the council has to incorporate those changes. Just, does your council hold a hearing when they're?
We, we, effectively, we do. In, in, in the last shoreline master program update for the, for the public art, we did, we did actually notice a public hearing for that, for that one. We don't, we don't always, our legislative process doesn't require it if we hold a public hearing at the planning commission. Level, but if we have changes like you're describing, then we would, we would necessarily have to, I believe.
So. Riddle me this, let's say. Let's say today was tomorrow and, and. Elaine, I forget your last name, sorry. Presented some verbal comments. To us and saying. I recommend some wordsmithing occur on your definitions of X, Y, and Z. And so then we could either say nah, we don't think that's necessary, or we could say. Yeah, based on the public input, Carl, we recommend you make those changes. Couldn't we then? Make a motion to you? And say, based on the public input tonight. This is our recommendation and then we could put closure to it without and forwarded on to the city council?
Yes.
So. So. Given that we have invited. Written input and we've given notice about the meeting. Is there a way to just? Reconvene tomorrow for. A five minute meeting? Or, or say that, you know, I'm just trying to, it, it seems like. This doesn't have to require a 30 day delay.
No. I don't think it does, Kim Mahoney, I think is trying to break into the discussion here.
Yeah, I, I have some thoughts, I. Just kind of bouncing ideas with you at this point, Carl, but really. A lot of what the planning commission is considering is staff's recommendation and so, you know, perhaps the best way to manage this is to. Is to provide a recommendation right now that the decision or the recommendation provided by the planning commission be held in advance until staff has an opportunity to review. The cup, the public comment that may be provided tomorrow. And determine whether our recommendation would be to incorporate the suggested changes. Or, or not, and, you know, pro, provide that to the planning commission for their consideration on, on that recommendation. You know, we, we, we would not want to, to rush this. We, we would want to take a little bit of time to be able to review the comment and, and what suggested changes. Are, are being made by Puget Sound Energy. And so perhaps there's an opportunity to amend our recommendation to the planning commission this evening that they. Hold their decision in advance for a week or three days. To give the opportunity for the public comment period to close and to give staff the opportunity to. Consider the content of the comment and potentially revise our recommendation or not, because our recommendation could very well be. Not change the recommendation that's been presented to the planning commission tonight. In which case I would agree with the chair that there doesn't seem to be any justification for an extent of 30 days at a timeline, what do you think?
Yeah, if I, so if I understand it correctly, the process would be the planning, landing commission would make a recommendation this evening based on. What has been presented to them in the public. And. That recommendation would, would be held in abeyance. Until staff has, has opportunity to. Review. Public comment. And determine whether or not any changes are necessary.
I think we could probably do something like that. Well, through my mind or after any other thing of a reason why we couldn't.
Well, the other, the other option, the other option here is that, you know. After this recommendation is made by the planning commission, it goes to the, the, the chapters go to the Department of Ecology for a consistency review. In some cases, the Department of Ecology during their review will make changes to or make suggested changes. Which are more than suggestions because they actually have the ultimate control to approve the SMP, right? So, but they are suggested changes and. I suppose it's, it's the city's purview, then the local jurisdiction's purview, then to determine whether or not those changes necessitate bringing it back to the planning commission. Or moving the package forward to the city council with the planning commission's recommendation on what they have reviewed. Along with the Department of Ecology's suggested changes. And that would also then include any public comment. And even if there were public comment made that the planning commission chose not to incorporate into their recommendation. Those public comments would still go up to the city council for their consideration and the city council could at that time determine if they wanted to incorporate. Those comments into their ultimate decision. So Chair, if I, if I could be so bold as to say, I think that we are. Okay, in the process as it stands, if the planning commission is comfortable with what it has reviewed to date. And from what it has heard from public comment, which is obviously not very much to date. And making their recommendation based on, on what this body has studied. To date and, and, and forming the, the recommendation or their recommendation around that. And allowing staff and to work with the Department of Ecology. On next steps for whatever public comment we hear and whatever. Suggestions or recommendations come out of the Department of Ecology's consistency review, which is going to take place regardless.
Right. Yeah, I, I like that recommendation, so I suppose a, a motion would be something to the effect that. That the planning, you know, we as. that the planning, you know, we as planning commission move to send this forward to the city council as written, recognizing that additional public comment may come in before tomorrow's deadline, which could impact the final recommendation of the wording to the city council or something along those lines.
If I I would say, Chair, that it would be that the planning commission's recommendation would be less concerned with the with what those public, what impacts those public comments might have on the on the amended chapters at this point. Because the planning commission has is making a recommendation based on what it has, what what this body has reviewed to this point. So I think they would, I think your recommendation would essentially be saying, we recommend approval based based on what has been presented to us this evening. And then leaving it to city council to make make a decision on whether or not they incorporate those those suggested changes that we hear from public comment as well as from the Department of Ecology. If the planning commission is comfortable with that, that attract.
Well, I personally am, and and actually that would be a much cleaner and and less verbose motion that that, you know, we recommend approval based on our ten meetings worth of discussions. But recognizing that the public comment period doesn't close until tomorrow.
I agree, I think that's a very clean approach.
Same here.
I agree.
I do as well.
Do we need to address those things that you said we had to add the correction of the error?
Thank you, Commissioner, for reminding me, we, as as part of this recommendation, I I think it should be noted or, you know, it should be a proviso within the recommendation, something, something to the effect that that if 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 and when the Pierce County staff corrects the Scrivener's error for the spit property that planning commission recognizes that that figure five.
I wrote down five two A.
Five two A.
Pervented it, yeah.
A five two A would be included, would be amended to to include that property within the urban growth area.
Okay, so does someone want what someone like to make a formal motion, then trying to wrap all of that up to in the one simple statement?
This Chairman, I was going to suggest maybe that we get some language from Carl, and then I'd be prepared to go ahead and move it.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, let me take a shot at that. The City of Big Harbor Planning Commission recommends recommends the shoreline master program periodic update and amendments as presented by staff at this evening's hearing is moved on to city council for approval with the proviso that figure five to a may be amended to include the spit property within the city's urban growth area should Pierce County correct the Scrivener's error.
Okay, that will be my motion.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Bennett. So any questions or discussion about that mo- motion? Let's see, a lot of head shaking, no? Okay, all those in the favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I saw five ayes, so that means it passes unanimously. So thank you very much, after much ado and a run on, most sentence run on. We could, an unavoidable one perhaps, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is just next business.
Oh, thank you, Chair. So at the next meeting, and I apologize, I know at our last meeting, I said that we were going to use every waking minute of the planning commission's time for the rest of the year because we had so many things we needed to get done, and then, of course, I canceled the next meeting, so I I do apologize for misleading you. In that way, we kind of ran into an issue with what we were planning to present at that meeting, and so we didn't want to come in premature. But at the October seventh planning commission meeting, we will be bringing the urban growth area analysis back to planning commission for study session number two. And Burke, our our consultant who's working on that with us, will be presenting at that meeting and taking questions and comments from planning commission. And I will not be present at that meeting, but Katrina will be there for representing staff, so. October seventh, and that'll be back to our normal, normal time study sessions.
Okay. Okay. Other business from the commissioners. Alrighty, well, seeing none, I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, well, staff, nice job, as always, appreciated, and appreciate your input along the way as well, Kim. Kim Z. or VZ. And we always appreciate appreciate Kim Mahoney and Michelle Thomas working in the background to keep us and particularly me in line about what the procedures need to be, so thanks again for that. And we will see you all in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.